Good afternoon. Got four? Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on August 20th. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I'm over.
Motion by Mr. Felix Gannon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? Ms. Lucy, will you read those changes, please?
Shouldn't we have, we need to have a vote on that first to suspend the rules.
Do we vote on it first, or you read it?
Yeah, to suspend the rules, then you read them.
All in favor?
I'm opposed.
Three, one.
Thank you.
Three, one. Mr. Tisdale again.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item five double B, the exhibit only.
I love the shades.
Ms. Lucy, will you read that again? I don't think anyone heard you.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting the exhibit only for item five double B, and we're also adding item five double L, resolution creating economic development security fund projects.
Thank you, Ms. Lucy. Now do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor? Oh, thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Okay. Six, and he's abstaining.
Wasn't here to read it, so I don't want to vote on it.
We'll move on to presentation agenda. Mayor's report?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I'd like to welcome also everyone, or also welcome everyone, but at this point in time, I'd like to ask Kim Fritz to come up in and give us a report on that great project she's wrapping up. Kim?
Hi, good afternoon. So, our project is complete, basically about, well, a little less than a year ago. Y'all approved us to be the first recipient of the downtown Biloxi housing grant, and appreciate it very, very much. As a result, you can see some pictures that, I'm going to get professional pictures taken, but so far this is what I have. So, less than a year ago, we started the foundation, and then I have some pictures of the progression. Framing, not outside, not done yet, but balconies up. And this is the last picture I have of the completed building. It's got shutters on it, landscaping's done, and we're very proud of it. I have some pictures of the two-bedroom apartment. All of the apartments and commercial units are rented, so that's exciting. This is the two-bedroom, and then when I get the professional pictures taken, I'll share them with y'all, so you can use it however you'd like to. So, we're just looking forward to moving in. My office is going to be with one of the units. I'm getting it ready right now. I want to make sure I have window treatments and all my decorations done. And the other unit, commercial unit, is going to be a, well, we've submitted and received a building permit for the build-out. It's going to be a nutritional beverage store, so basically loaded teas and meal replacement shakes, no cooking, basically like a coffee shop, no food. And then, of course, we have the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom rented, and they're very happy with it. Thank you.
That was very good. We're proud of you. Kim, you know, sales tax in residence, so that's-
Absolutely.
So, that's meeting the purpose of what we thought, but it's outstanding. The pictures don't do it justice. I drove by just a few hours ago, so it really is good. We're proud of you. We thank you.
It is a very good-looking building. I drove that area quite a bit. It's a nice-looking building. Good luck, much success.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'd like to ask Kevin to come up, give us a little report on some questions that this council had.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me a few minutes today. I want to recognize Michael Strohne. He's your representative on the CTA Board of Commissioners. He's here today. With, like, in the interest of time, I'd like to read a brief statement and then answer any of your questions. I have reviewed the video of the council meeting on Monday, August 12th, and see whether there is still concern about the level of operating subsidy we are requesting in 2020. As I understand from the video, there's concern that the fiscal year 2019 subsidy request for $320,000 consisted of the fiscal year '18 request of $282,800 for base fixed route service, plus the $34,480,000 provided in fiscal year 2018 for Route 32, which equals The amount of $320,000 we requested in FY 2019 this year for base fixed route service was actually based on a projection of 24,700 hours of service at a cost of $70 an hour. There was an increase in operating cost per hour from $65 an hour in fiscal year 2018 to $70 an hour this fiscal year 2019. A significant increase as a result of increased costs for labor, 5.8 percent, contract security at the Biloxi Transit Center, $40,000, or 50 percent liability insurance and claims at 11 percent, and fuel at 7.5 percent. We utilize the exact same format for each city when we determine what we ask for local annual operating subsidies. I provided last week the combined annual subsidy worksheets for fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2020. It demonstrates that we use the same format and projected operating cost per hour for each of the four cities we serve. CTA did not use the fiscal year 2018 Biloxi base fixed route subsidy of $282,800 and add the fiscal year 2018 subsidy for Route 32 of $34,480 to come up with a base service request of $320,000 for this fiscal year 2019, and then request an additional $23,650 to operate Route 32 this fiscal year 2019. That would be misconduct and would have been identified by Mr. Michael Leonard and the city council a year ago during your fiscal year 2019 budget request. There was no question of the $320,000 CTA fiscal year 2019 subsidy request when you approved it during the budget process you conducted last year. CTA uses your annual operating subsidy as local match for federal funding to operate the service we provide. Biloxi is subsidizing the annual operating cost at 18 percent, well below the regional average of 53 percent. $40,000 in annual subsidy supports $220,000 of service. The loss of $40,000 in local match funding in fiscal year 2020 leaves CTA without the financial means to match the federal funds and will result in a reduction in services. In fiscal year 2020, CTA is projecting to provide 315,000 fixed route passenger trips in Biloxi. Our survey data indicates purpose of trip is work, 31 percent, shopping, 24 percent, recreation, 21 percent, and medical, 77 percent of trips. The type of riders are regular fare, 60 percent, seniors, 28 percent, disabled, 11 percent, and students, 1 percent. The highest ridership generators are Walmart, Edgewater Mall, Treasure Bay, Imperial Palace, all of the casinos, the West Biloxi Library, Surf Style, Margaritaville, and Point Cadet Seniors Village. So, we have a very diverse group of riders in Biloxi out going to work, spending money, taking care of their grocery shopping, be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
We set the budget, we talked about it, we increased $288,000, you know, and just like us, we don't have anybody to go to to get the money, and we expect you to live within the $288,000 and provide the most service you can provide. You know, we have to do the same thing with $45,000 citizens. You can't turn around every time and get raised taxes, raised taxes, raised taxes. You know, you try to deal with what you have and the money. We allocated $288,000. We thought that was a fair amount. That's probably six, seven thousand more than it was last year, not counting the added route and everything. That was done. But my thing is, you, just like us, have to look at what you can do for the $288,000. You know, we have the same problem here. Everybody comes in, we can't give them $50,000 more, $50,000 more, somebody got to pay for it, you know? And we feel like we being fair with you, with your $288,000. Can you handle it? Can you work within it?
No.
I guess maybe what we ought to do is let's see what you can do with that, and in six months it's not that bad, and you come back to it. But that's just my thoughts on it.
And I can respect that. I just didn't want to continue. Do you have a concern that we put an extra $34,480 in that $320,000 number, because that's not an accurate portrayal of what's going on? I wanted to come here today and clear that up. I respect that you have financial challenges, and we appreciate any amount that you can allocate for us, and we'll do the very best we can with the amount of money you give us. We will give you the best service we can.
Thank you. I have a quick question, and I talked to you the other day. I'm sorry I didn't get back with you. I'm just busy this weekend, but I did look over your email. So, basically what you're saying is from 2017, '18 to '18, '19, your base operating expense went from $282,800 to $320,000 for the routes that we run?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's an increase of $37,200 in one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the only question.
I have a couple of observations. I spoke with Mr. Coggan earlier and asked him to send me just a history of the Biloxi subsidy over the years, and I think you sent me the numbers back through 1998, which at that time was $158,000 and some change. And then in 2002, it was up to $279,000 and some change, about to where we were through 2018. So that's 16 years, basically where it's remained the same, except for, in 2009 and 2010, it was about $350,000. Then 2011, it dropped back to $280,000. And based on the information that you've given us, to run the same routes that you ran last year with a $5 increase in operating hour, that accounts for the roughly $38,000. And if we can't provide $320,000, your only alternative is to cut a route somewhere, I would assume. Is that accurate?
Yes, cut sometime somewhere. We will look at that certainly.
Okay. And I like Mr. Lawrence's idea of if we go with $280,000 right now, maybe look back in six months to see where we are, maybe things are a little better.
$288. That's what we actually passed, $288.
$288. I couldn't remember the number. Thank you. $288.
That's fine.
And just mark on your calendar, I would say, as Mr. Lawrence does, come back in six months and let's see where we are. However, the first six months, you still have to make a determination on whether you're going to cut a route.
That's what you gotta pay it to. That's my thing. I know what you're doing there. That's fine. Don't miss the thing. Clean it up and make it lit up so where these people can see them. What they're doing, their business, they pay their taxes and they get retail like anybody else. So you make sure we follow up on that. I'll have to do it every day. I can't let Dixie do it, so I'm gonna have to do it. Cause she got a nice all jacked up coffee shop in Ward One. Great coffee. Okay, you need to know that. We need to see it. Need to be clean. Up and down the street. That's something we have to do, Mayor. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
I don't know if I could follow George. I had some questions for Walt. I don't see him here concerning some of the infrastructure projects on the north side of the railroad track. But I do wanna inform my colleagues. I went to a census conference this weekend and I have some information for them. And as we know, that census count affect federal dollars and I will have that as we have our council meetings. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Dimming?
Mr. Mayor, on the agenda, consent agenda item I, I wasn't able to pull that up when I read the agenda this weekend and I'm still not able to pull it up over here. Is there any way to give me a copy of consent agenda I? It's the dredging phase two project?
What about it?
I haven't even, I haven't been able to read the resolution, so I don't even have questions for anyone until I can actually read it. And I don't know if anyone else has had the ability to pull it up, but I just wasn't able to.
This, I mean, as I, and I've followed this because this is tied to the Walmart properties in Arbor Landing, which is in my ward. Bobby, and the rest of, most of this council passed a TIF bond that took the Advalorm taxes and the sales taxes frankly, that were generated from those entities and put it in a TIF to improve the infrastructure in and around that area, that TIF area. And that was the purpose of it.
No, I'm talking about consent agenda I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were a J and I.
It's the dredging. It's phase, phase two consent agenda.
Gotcha.
This, this was missing the original project.
I know.
dredge.
dredge.
As in ice.
So it would be.
Councilman, that's heavy.
Fifty-three thousand.
We're adding Linda Drive to the dredging project. We're adding Linda Drive to the dredging project. Correct.
Well said.
Did you have any other question?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, a couple of things. I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank Justin Lopez with the Biloxi Fire Department and his father, who is a retired firefighter Curtis, and probably his mother and Curtis' wife as well for repairing and cleaning the Camille Memorial where on the seventeenth, which was Thursday, and I appreciate the mayor attending, there was a memorial service for those souls lost during Hurricane Camille. So I wanted to just acknowledge his assistance on that. Thank you, Chief Boni. The second thing is, if it's possible for me to get a hard copy, I know there's a link to the SMPDD study on road maintenance that was done in June 2018. If somebody has a hard copy I could look at. I'd just like to review it for a few days. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment on we've added to the consent agenda item five LL. And I haven't had a lot, a long time to kinda look at this proposal, but it seems like if I'm interpreting this correctly, we wanna add guard gates in that tourists would pay to be able to use parking. I'm not sure if we have anything like that in and around the city yet. And I know for Shuckers Games, we've added, we've added desperately add parking to alleviate our parking issues. And I don't think we charge anyone that's going to Shuckers Games for additional parking or the privilege of parking. We've had to endure over the past recent months, the Bonnie Carey spillway, national news, flooding that's been the worst since 1927. The flesh-eating bacteria and the algae bloom, national media. We had a hurricane scare at the wrong time of the year that detrimentally affected our tourist industry in the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And the news keeps continuing on and on from our seafood being tainted, which it isn't, but that national news media is out there. And now to put another burden on tourists that are visiting and saying, we're gonna make it more difficult for you to stay and play. I'd have to get more information before I could support that. But I just noticed it was added on today and we didn't have a lot of time to kinda discuss or review or debate it. And I just wanted to chime in on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr.
President, can I, can I comment?
Sure.
Give him some more information. We've been studying this for over a year, I think, you know, and that park lot used to generate four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year annually for parking. When Margaritaville came on board, they were giving us a hundred and twenty thousand a year for, for at least one year and maybe a few more months. Again, in, you know, that parking lot is used and it's prime parking. And when you compare it to some of the places in World War II museum, any place in the downtown area of New Orleans, five dollars for one time to get in there all day is, is I think, a wise use of this hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna put in the ground. We expect to do about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year there. You know, at any one point in time, that's 204 parking places there. And you can count almost every day, a hundred, somebody's using it. You know, and we've been making some accommodations to, to make the thing easier, especially with the Golden Nug employees who seem to be paying there and playing there and, or staying there and some of the other folks. So this is at least gonna give us the ability to, you know, cash in or actually get some return on that prime real estate.
I appreciate that, Mayor, but we also have prime parking around the seafood industry museum. And I just don't want this to set a precedent that all of a sudden, we have public parking that now we're charging for, that we're setting a precedent that it opens the can of worms for some other areas as well.
It's similar to the Coliseum. You know, Coliseum pays five dollars to get into the thing. So I mean, it's as valuable and it's a place, it's a prime place. And, and you know, every time we've tried to ask, no, we don't use it. Well, somebody's using it. And they're in one of those two places. Not so much our harbor. So that's the logic. And, you know, I don't wanna be too rough or anything, but I think it's the proper thing to do. That's a resource we need to make, make use of. Again, the old days, it was generating a bunch of money. And we're just trying to recover a little bit of that.
Dick Salat is a sponsor of both of them, if you don't mind. When they originally did that parking, we used to receive two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year from two casinos. By law and the decree from the courts, we can get up to three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for that piece of property per year. And that goes straight to the city of Biloxi. Above that, then you split half with the state and half with the city. So yes, you have to charge part of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for people who's paying this bill. And now the last couple of years, everybody quit paying and expect that to be free. So I don't know so much about public parking because it was always charged for. They just paid it. They quit doing it. But we allowed up to three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars collecting that piece of property, goodbyes of this property. So no, right now, we need to collect the money.
Mr. Barrett, do you have a council report?
Yes, I have several things. I've been on the phone today with several of our department heads. And yesterday, we had another significant rain event. And throughout my ward, we just had major issues. Wash Fayard Road was one of those issues, right there to the north of, I believe it's where the drainage crosses the road, just to the north of Nature's Trail. We had over two foot of water in the road. If a car, a small car had tried to pass that, it would've washed them off the road. It's a continuing problem there that we have just an excessive amount of runoff that is well beyond what was there before. Not only that, we have tons of silt that is getting out of that project and getting into the ditches and the creeks. And if you drive through Nature's Trail today, there's two or three inches of mud in the road, all through that subdivision from the drain off on the property. Something has to be done there. And, and leaving that project, you can go throughout the, and I have pictures that were texted and emailed to me and sent on Facebook. We were, we annexed that area in 1999, 2000, something like that. I know it's prior to even George being here. But, um, so it was a long time ago. But there's people that sent me pictures yesterday that had been in the city for 20 years and not one time has the city cleaned their ditches out. I'm not blaming Public Works. I actually feel sorry for them. They're undermanned. Many times, they don't have the adequate equipment. And then a large portion of the year, we pull them out of where they should be working down here to put cones out and to put barriers out and things like that. This is something that I've brought up over and over and over again. And we'll send people out and we'll dig a few ditches and then it's forgotten about. We have to make it a priority to get out there and get these ditches cleaned out in our ward. I don't care if it means that if it costs enough money, too much money, I don't care if it means we have to cut our non-departmentals completely. Or we hire another company to get in there and just start digging ditches until it's done. Or we go and try to get the help of the county. Or we hire more people in Public Works. Like I said, I'm not Mike, and Mike and his crew do a great job. But Ward Seven is bigger than the entire city as far as land goes, and we are just grossly undermanned out there. This is one of the reasons I was so adamantly opposed to spending 1.5 million dollars out of our bond to go to the singer. Because needs of the citizen should always supersede the wants for amenities. This isn't a want. This isn't something that'll just make someone's life easier. This is something that is causing people major problems and causing issues to the investments on their properties. And it can't continue. We have to make it a priority. And whatever it takes to get people out there digging ditches until it's cleaned out and our drainage is corrected, we have to do it. I know Christie's been out there working today. I know I've talked to Jerry and they've looked at things. And it's not just that one area. It's throughout the whole ward. We have a large area that has to be taken care of. And we have to do whatever it takes to get out there and, and get these, get these ditches cleaned out, as well as correct the problems that we have in some of these subdivisions on this runoff that is much more, the post-runoff is much greater than the pre-runoff. And so whatever it is that we have to do, we have to make it a priority and work at it. We don't need to just address it. We don't need to just talk about it. We have to get some results and make it happen. And, and you know, I have a, I have a picture still coming in to me. I've sent a lot of them over to Christie already. But, and I'm gonna get them to everyone. I just have them there continuing to come in. And I've got 50, 75, 80 pictures that have come in throughout the whole ward. And it's just not acceptable for a city that has the resources that we have not to make this one of our greatest priorities above other things that aren't needs in the city. A need and amenity are two different things. And this is a need that has to be taken care of immediately. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. And I would just like to ask y'all that you please support five I, which is, like I said earlier, adding Linda Drive to the dredging project, which should've been added to begin with. So we're just amending the resolution. And I hope you support it. And with that, we'll move on to public agenda, which is citizen comments. We have 45 minutes allotted. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. Please sign in as well as state your name and address aloud for the record. And please speak directly into the microphone. Anyone on my left-hand side, your right, that would like to come speak? Anyone? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to come speak? Come on down.
What I'm introducing is humanitarian lab outreach with the Biloxi School District at the Buvor School location. The Buvor School location I recognize because they were trying to demolition it. And so I went to Harris County Board of Supervisors to introduce it. And I also been to Biloxi School District to introduce it. So I'm here to initiate a partnership to introduce economic development, retain our students, and for this opportunity for international federalization with Red Cross. Red Cross has a business outreach program at Innovation Center, recently I attended to do business with Red Cross, and is advocating for universal access for health care, implementing community-based approach. What I'm doing and introducing at the Transportation Summit coming up, I'll be located there. I'm reaching out to Senator Roger Wicker to introduce it appropriately for economic development opportunities, for green space manufacturing opportunities, for technology transfer with universities. I have all this compelling in my heart and head, ladies and gentlemen. I've been working on this strategically and appropriately with United States Chamber of Commerce STEM Program with our Hall of Fame Program with United States Chamber of Commerce for the children. So I have all this for us to represent Mississippi more appropriately instead of Mississippi burning. So here we go. I have all this. And I'm bringing forth my other program for amenities for disabled community with the American Legion. It's taking that program over for me. So here we go for this initiative, for our outreach. We're doing L3C Corporation for Legislature Initiative, L3C Corporation, where you can incorporate LLC with 501(c)(3) for tax person grant right purposes. So I have all this for us. So here we go. I will be associating myself appropriately to write designated association with proper people. And thank you much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Anyone else?
It's human centered design for VA innovation.
Would you like to speak, sir?
Hello. My name's Terry Shelton. I'm not in charge of anything except for a problem we have with our neighborhood. No pause, we're, heard about it. Poor man has put up with me for how many months?
A few.
A few. Times I get upset about something that's been going on in this city for 30, 40, 50 years. And that's DeBee's Road. Now, we can talk about it. We can kick the can down the road like Biloxi is famous for, as well as Gulf, we can kick this thing down the road like Biloxi, Gulfport, and Harrison County have been famous for. Y'all can finally fix it. The north end of DeBee's Road is very narrow, full of potholes, asphalt's crumbling. We have school buses that come to our neighborhood every morning during school. And all those laughing, screaming children having a good time going to school, coming home, what's gonna happen when something runs into them? Because there's no leeway to get to them. Simple fix, fix the road. I preached about it. I begged Harrison County about it, which I seem to be placed on the forgotten files since the election's over. I presented a petition to Mr. Tisdale and Fofa Gilich. The majority of the people signed, over three-fourths of the residents signed that petition. And I don't feel like we're getting any support. I just wanna know what's going on so I can tell these other people.
This is not a question and answer, but I'm sure either Mike Leonard will get with you right after.
If I may make a comment, we have a ward meeting scheduled for Monday, September 9.
Yes, sir.
I'll have any resources in terms of personnel to answer any questions you might have about DeBee's Road.
I'm not asking questions. I'm wanting results. How many years does it take to ask questions and not get results? Fair question.
Mr. Leonard, would you get with him after the meeting, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone in the back? Okay, if not, citizen comments are now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Ms. Lucy, will you please read ordinance A?
Ordinance to authorize the extension of the boundaries of the existing architectural West Central Historic Overlay District.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Guines. Being a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend the tax for members of the Architectural and Historical Review Commission.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Guines. Being a first reading also, we'll move on to ordinance C.
Ordinance to authorize a change in zoning for 69 parcels of land from NB Business and RS High Density Single Family to DT Downtown.
Previously moved and seconded by?
Thank you.
That's the second reading.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
This is the first step we need to take care of. What is it? West Howard Avenue Wizards?
Howard Avenue's West End Merchant.
This is the first step. The rest, the mayor's gotta follow up on. Clean it up, light it up.
Light it up, Mayor.
This is the first step, right. I ask everybody to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
What George said.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. We'll read, Ms. Lucy, read Resolution D, please.
Resolution appointing Brian Patterson to the Building and Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
I don't think so. Anybody wants to serve, let them serve.
Mr. Tisdale?
Like George said.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Is Brian here? Okay, move on to Resolution E.
Resolution appointing Dean Perkins to the Building and Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Same quote.
Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Like George said.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Is Dean Perkins here? Okay, moving on. Resolution F.
Resolution to deny a zoning change for property identified as 1012 till your court.
I'll move to deny.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
I'll have Jerry Creel like to explain why we denying this one. So everybody get all this stuff straight. Mr. Creel, be, be good now.
Okay. Actually, what it was, we had a number of neighbors that came to the planning commission meeting. And this property is not right on Howard Avenue. It's south of some of those properties on Howard Avenue. And the neighbors just felt that it encroached too far into the neighborhood district. And the spirit of the planning commission and council was, is that we did not want short-term rental in there, which is what this request was for, for him to do short-term rental. Now, the good side of this is, is that even without the short-term rental, this house at one time was a duplex and still has two meter boxes on it. So without any zoning change or anything, he can turn it back into a duplex. So he didn't lose altogether.
Thank you.
Is he here today? No? Okay. Mr. Tisdale, you have any discussion?
No, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Bring, moving on to G.
Resolution to grant a conditional use for property identified as 141 Keller Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Creel could kind of explain why this one here is gonna be approved. That's what everybody needs to know. We just, you know, to make sure you got it straight, why deny one and why you approve another one.
Okay. This one is, this one is actually in a business zoning already. And asked for conditional use, it's very close to the beach, which the planning commission felt was more appropriate. The lady has taken good care of this property and it's very accessible from Beach Boulevard. And that's the reason. And there was no objections at the planning commission meeting for many of the neighbors.
Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Moving on to Resolution H.
Resolution for final subdivision plan approval for Eastland subdivision.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Glavin. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
This is on the corner of 67 and Wool Market Road. And I know that there's some people in the area that do have some drainage concerns, but the drainage project that we're about to put out to bid is gonna be covering that entire area there. And so that, that will take care of, of that area. So, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Stifle does a great job in his developments.
Mr. Glavin?
What Nathan said.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Moving on to Resolution I.
Resolution for the city of Biloxi for tax increment financing for the amount of $2,500,000.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Glavin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I think I had it earlier, but just wanna reiterate, it's doing what it's supposed to do. It hasn't raised the whole two and, two and a half million dollars, but it does have the funding necessary to continue on and improve some of the infrastructure in and around the area like this TIF was intended for.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, the only thing I'd add to that is any sales taxes generated from this project goes to pay off the TIF and does not go on the general fund, just if everybody remembers correctly. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Moving on to J.
Resolution to approve form of private placement agreement for the sale and not to exceed 1.418600 tax increment financing revenue bonds.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Do I have a motion on the consent?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Glavin?
Uh.
Mr. Tisdale?
Wade, I do have a couple of things. You know, I wanna revisit, you know, with the mayor talking about this parking issue. Do we have any others that we're doing this with? Is there one over at Point Cadet? Didn't we approve an arm or, what's that? Uh, yeah, continuing discussion, sure.
I would just love a chance to review this before we vote on it. I don't know that it's, it doesn't seem that it's a time-sensitive issue. And I would move to table this for at least a week so we can review the information we just got today.
Okay, so I have a motion to table?
From observation, it's our observation that the majority of people parking there today are not tourists.
Okay.
Is this the parking lot between the two casinos, or is this the one on the side beside the bridge?
On the south side.
Okay. And then the one by the bridge, we have a lot of homeless people camping out there. Okay.
I have a motion to table five LL from Mr. Demming. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. All in favor of tabling? Unanimous vote with Guines out of the room. Any other discussion items, Mr. Glavin?
I just wanna note that I'll, I'm gonna be recusing myself from the, there's one on here. I don't know what the number is, but regarding Margaritaville. Or, I'm sorry, Biloxi Lodging LLC.
Which one is that?
I'll find it in a minute. Which one?
It was an add-on. The other add-on.
B?
Five BB.
BB, we added it.
Okay.
So.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming?
Yeah, DD. Delta Delta?
Dog dog?
Dog dog. Demming Demming. The, this is, this resolution cedes the authority of the council's requirement to approve expenditures on licensing and software purchases, correct?
That's right, sir. And you know, this is not, this is not something we're passionate about. We're trying to ease the, have you noticed, I'm sure, the multitude of nearly dozens and dozens of resolutions approving software renewals.
Right.
And if you wanna continue seeing those, it's just a little extra workload, but we'll continue doing it. But this was just an option that we wanted to offer you to not have to look at the three dollar and twenty cent renewal price.
We actually provide to one single budget that we've talked about, individual. So we'll have a population of what we need for the software. Software and support. Now, it reaches eight hundred thousand a year. And, you know, every component from police and fire dispatch, Public Works, things like City Works, everything, GIS, all those things are wrap up into one budget that, you know, we're gonna try and manage and get aggressive on that. So...
Look, I agree with anything that streamlines things. However, this is the express authority of the council, and it is what this council has set out to do by statute, by the organization of our strong mayor council type of government. So I'm not inclined to give up that just because we may not have to see
Details.
resolutions on the agenda. But I would like to be part of the expenditures and the purchases as per our form of government. So I am in oppose to DD. I would hope that the rest of the council would join me in opposition to DD, simply because that is what we're designed to do.
One of the things we've tried to do, we've tried to be more visible and open with the council than in the past. In the past, and this I'm talking about going back a couple of years, all of these software licenses, renewals, were approved by purchase order, and you never saw them. So what we're trying to do is for you to be able to see them. Now you would, a purchase order would show up on the docket, but it'd just be a line and, you know, it just kinda blowing right by you without seeing it. So we're writing an actual separate resolution for every single two dollar and forty cent increase to a software license. And if that's something the council doesn't wanna give up on, we understand.
I still think that that's appropriate. Again, that is the purpose, whether we argue about the amount of money. Today, it might be two dollars and forty cents. Tomorrow might be two thousand and forty cents, and so on and so forth. It's a slippery slope once we start conceding the purpose of the council versus the mayor in this form of government.
All we, when we put this together, the offer to you was, anything more than a five percent increase would have to come to council.
How much money do we spend on aggregate?
Aggregate, a little over nine hundred thousand.
So five percent of that roughly, forty-five thousand? So it could go up forty thousand?
Now, that's nine hundred thousand for somewhere in the neighborhood, I can maybe get some help here, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty different software packages that we buy every year.
Right, no, and I understand that. But to Mr. Demming's point, his point is, it's not really the money, obviously, as much as it is limiting the scope of the council's authority. And I think, I think he's right there. Personally, if it doesn't give anybody heartburn, I mean, it's just a pain in the neck. But sometimes being a councilman, things get to be a pain in the neck, just as it does for the CAO and the mayor. But it's one of these things I think we have to do. That's all. Thank you.
I'll move to pull DD out and vote on it separately.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to pull DD out by Mr. Demming, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any more discussion? All in favor? So five, two. Two, Guines and Lawrence against pulling it off. Yeah, I mean, pulling it off to the side. Did you get that, Ms. Lucy?
Right.
Do we wanna vote on it right now?
Do, anytime you want. Anytime you want.
Any other discussion?
Kenny just asked to recuse himself.
Okay. All in favor of, what are we doing again? Pulling it?
We voted to vote on it separately.
So now we're...
President's prerogative.
Right. So now we would be voting on
Correct.
the approval or disapproval of item DD. What we voted on was to pull it out and vote separately. You could do that now, Madam President.
All in favor of the resolution?
DD.
DD. Okay. All against? So unanimous, or is that against? Talking about Glavin. Did you vote? Okay. So unanimous? Oh, Guines voted for it. So one-six. Sorry. Six-one. All right. Any other discussion, Mr. Demming?
I would just like to note that I am in opposition to T. It's in Tom and CC, Charlie, Charlie. Those are eminent domain issues. And on I, the dredging project, Christie, I know I saw in there that you added the Bochin portion. It's already on that Phase Two when we added Linda. Have we looked at Patricia Place, that section behind the homes on Patricia Place that run perpendicular to the Thornton Drive Bridge?
If I, I'll look it up.
Okay. I know we talked about it at one point, and it's a very small, narrow area. Okay, so if you would take a look at that, so maybe we can add that. Thank you.
Okay. So you're against T and CC? All right. Mr. Guines, you have any discussion?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
No?
Yep. I kinda went over all of them.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote with Demming against T, as in Tom, and CC, Cat Cat, and Glavin is abstaining against BB, Boys and Boy. And we'll move on to code enforcement.
The one that we tabled, the next meeting, we're gonna bring LL. Is that gonna be at the next meeting? The next, no, no, the one about the parking lot. No, he said the new table, LL.
No, we voted it down. No, we tabled LL.
LL.
We didn't decide when.
That's different. So you'll have it. You're gonna, subject's call, what you gonna do with it?
I'd say one week.
Okay.
One week. Yes, ma'am. All right. Moving on to code enforcement.
The first case on the agenda today is Shirley A. Belanisich Estate, sixteen sixteen Hollywood Boulevard. And this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Shirley A. Belanisich Estate, sixteen sixteen Hollywood Boulevard? If not, this case is closed.
Item B on the agenda, Marlene A. Gillich, two fifty-seven C. L. Avenue. We've been informed this week that this property has been sold. So we would take this one back and start over with the new owner.
What do we need to do with that?
So we would call it resolved right now, and we would bring it back. Okay. Item C on the agenda, Rick Lee, two sixty Coon Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Rick Lee at two sixty Coon Street? Anyone here? Not case closed.
Item D on the agenda, Sylvester Pittman, five thirty-four Peyton Drive. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Sylvester Pittman at five thirty-four Peyton Drive?
Real quick, Mr. Pittman's been dead a couple of years. Is there anyone that you contacted on it?
Yes, someone actually called in and asked about the case, and, but didn't offer any resolution on it. So.
Case is closed.
Item E on the agenda, Rolmar LLC, three thirty-nine Lemieux Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Rolmar LLC at three thirty-nine Lemieux Street? If not, case closed. Do you have a motion on the routine agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
We stay up to date. That's the key. We're getting the money, spending what we need to spend on stuff we did. So just gotta make sure we get the money coming in. That's the name, name of the game.
All in favor of the routine? Unanimous vote? Okay. Do I have a motion to recess?
I'll move to close the meeting in honor of Commissioner Patterson.
Okay.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by, everybody's second. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Meeting recess.